Here.
Mr. Fair?
Here.
Mrs. Sevold?
She's coming up.
Coming. Mr. Broney?
Here.
Mrs. Vale?
Here.
Mr. Francis?
Here.
Mrs. Carl?
Here.
We are in session. Legislation for consideration, we have none for third reading. We have one for second reading, which is Resolution 2014-51. Mrs. Noel.
Resolution number 2014-51. A resolution to grant a utility right of way easement upon city property to the Ohio Cumberland Gas Company and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Carl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Based upon some new current information, which will be discussed in a little bit, I'd like to suspend the rule for three separate readings and take this resolution to its third and final reading.
Second.
And moving to second for the suspension of the rules, any discussion on the suspension? Yes?
I'd like an explanation as to why we should suspend and vote tonight.
Well, okay, you want that discussion now?
That's why we do it now, yeah.
Okay.
Just on the suspension?
Yeah.
Why we're suspending?
Because there's new information. Do we want to, do we, I want to, do you want me to bring Mark Ramser up right now to discuss why we should suspend? Or I was going to do that after? Okay.
Well, if you want people to vote yes on the suspension, we have to know why we're suspending.
Okay, okay.
We need to have at least five votes on the suspension.
Okay, that's fine, okay. There's just, there's new information that, that I've only learned about in the last few hours, and so, Mr. Ramser, if you would come up, and Mr. Zimmerman is here as well to give additional information.
Good evening. The reason we'd like to try to move forward with this, Kukoczyk Construction has started on their paving of the bike path sooner than we anticipated, and the area we're putting the gas line is just a couple feet away from where the paved area is going to be, and in order to make sure that we don't work on the paved area, once that's done, we'd like to get our pipeline, as far as we're going to go, on the bike path area first. It's not going to hold up the total project, I don't want to misrepresent that, because we won't be doing the railroad bore for about another three or four weeks, but really, we just want to get, be able to keep ahead of Kukoczyk so that we don't interfere with their work, or that we don't damage the pavement.
Okay. Any other questions on the suspension? Why we're suspending rules?
So I understand Kukoczyk wouldn't wait then? Is that what?
They just move very quickly. I think they have a reputation for that everywhere, all over the state, and so, we're just...
They may be bound by the contract, too. The timing, Kukoczyk may be bound by a contract, I don't know.
They, they do have plenty of time on the contract, but they've just, they jumped right on the project and started it quickly.
Okay. Any other questions on the suspension? Mrs. Noel.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Sevold?
Yes.
Mr. Broney?
Yes.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Carl?
I'd like to move for the adoption of Resolution 2014-51.
Second.
And moving to second for the adoption of this resolution. Mrs. Carl?
Okay. Are there any other questions here that any of you have? Mr. Zimmerman, did you want to say anything in addition to what Mr. Ramser said? He probably said pretty much what covers it.
Yeah, he addressed everything that I could, and I do, that's, some, some of that is under a block grant that has to be done in a certain amount of time also, isn't it, Mayor? Isn't that, I...
The funding that the Park District acquired, and they're matching, we're not providing funds on this, they're matching the money, and that's a good point, but I, I think the contract really was for August or somewhere.
Yes, it was supposed to be completed by this fall.
So they are moving, so they have, I think the timeframe probably is not a factor, they're just doing it early, and that's provided for in the contract, so we wouldn't, I don't think we could say that they're moving because they're pushed by a completion date on the contract, but...
Okay. That's really, I mean, we've had to make some adjustments, too, over to C A and C with trees and things, so, I mean, it's just, they're going to get it done ahead of schedule, which would be a plus.
Which is not a bad thing. It's a good thing. Yes.
Any other discussion from council?
Please.
Yes.
I'm not sitting here against the easement, I just, there's a lot of confusion in the neighborhood as far as what's going where. Exactly, in this easement, the drawing we have in front of us, Mark, I know the neighbors, especially the one that lives the last house on Madison Street, was concerned exactly where the gas line was going to run in that easement. That current easement goes through the corner of her house, as well as through her garage, are you aware of that? Where we're going to run it. And that's, the, one of the concerns of where it's going to run is because of where the city's lot line runs.
Mark, do you want to see a map there?
You're talking about the triangular property there on Madison, the very end?
The last house there where the line goes through the corner of the house and also runs through the garage.
Yeah, where we're going to be running, we have it, we have it staked out, it's going to be, I'm going to say approximately three feet or four feet off from the paved area, and the paved area, I believe, is fairly close to five feet from either side of the center of where the tracks were originally. We won't be in the area of anybody's house, so, we've already cleared the area where we're going to, well, actually down that area, we haven't cleared, but on up, but it's essentially going to be in a ditch line area there, just a few feet off the pavement, so, I think it's probably what, a 60-foot easement, 30-foot from either side, is that...
You mean railroad easements?
Right.
Most of those were 60 feet.
Yeah, so I'm going to estimate, we're probably about, I'm going to say 10-foot from the center line, something like that, because the pavement will be five-foot from the center.
Because I know the neighbors are going to be asking me, the ones that have already contacted me, is that about in the center, what we see in front of us then?
Well, it looks like part of that has expanded beyond 60-foot. I think the area down, if you look, that's not shaded, down, there would be west of Madison, I think that area is probably 60-foot. Actually, if you look at the area that's shaded, where you have the hooks, it looks like most of that, where it's, hasn't widened out, is probably about 60-foot. And again, my understanding is that they're going to have the pavement, I wasn't the one who laid, my company laid it out, but the pavement will be about five-foot on either side of that center line of that 60-foot, and so we'll be roughly eight to 10-foot off that center line.
That center line being that yellow line that goes down through those arrows?
No, I think, I think it'd be halfway between that yellow line and the dark line would be the center line.
You've got the original here, and so the center line is here.
Is that what you're talking about?
Keep in mind, these aren't cer, this isn't a survey, this is a tax map from the County Auditor's Office, and they tend to slide one way or the other.
I know the, the one house in particular, and I think Mr. Broney may be able to fill in what I missed over, but I know there was concern, there was, Mr. Broney tried to buy the property, and that's when, it's what, been 60 days at the lease?
Well, I inquired after they, after they inquired whether Foundation Park wanted to buy it, which it does not. I, I haven't seen the property. I've asked to see it, but I haven't been able to see it, because I don't...
I had a conversation with Mrs. Poole, and I may have misunderstood what she was trying to tell me.
No, she, she probably expressed that I had an interest in it.
And that's when they found out where these lot lines were, and she said she couldn't sell it at that time?
Right, right.
And that's, that's what's made some of the concern in phone calls, as to where the line, gas line is going to be compared to her house, as far as...
I, I think I've seen about where this line, based on where, where it's going to be in the part that you've already laid out, I don't think it's anywhere near the house property. I mean, it's really much closer to the rail.
I'd like to break that, too, because I've walked down through there, I know we're not close to the house at all.
Is there, do you already have a gas line in there?
We have a gas line that comes down Norton Street, across the river, on, and then it turns at, at Norton and follows the bike path, so we don't have one in this corridor right here, no.
So, in that shaded green that we're talking about tonight, you don't have one there already?
No.
Because that was a misunderstanding with the residents as well, they'd be happy to know that.
There, there are Columbia gas lines that come up, I think both Norton Street and Madison Street.
That's what I was told, this, actually, a twol inch in Madison is what I was told.
I'm not sure of the diameter, but...
And you're putting a four?
Right. This is just exclu, really exclusively to serve the C N G station.
Are these, or is this line going to be on top of the Columbia gas line, then?
Well, we cross over, we've already crossed over it at Norton Street, and we will be crossing over at Madison Street when we do that bore.
Just across it?
And I should say, we're going to be, going to be underneath of both of those. That's kind of the conventional way when one gas line crosses another, that usually the second one goes underneath.
Is there any danger or anything associated with that?
No.
And you've gotten permits and all this, whatever you need to do to do this, I'm right, just to show everybody?
We've gotten everything that we need from the township and the county, and we've applied to the railroad, so it's a matter of waiting out until the railroad gets their application back to us, or the permit back to us.
I don't see if anything else, we're only talking the annexation in the, the green, correct?
It's not annexed.
I'm sorry, or not, I, I easement, I'm just in the green, I'm sorry?
Well, I should say also, my understanding is Davis Street, is, is Davis Street in the city?
It is not, no.
It is not, okay, then it would just be the green area, yeah.
Davis, the crossing one from Columbus Road.
So the question the resident had, with the way the lot lines, the property lines are drawn right now, going through her house and garage, would this present a problem later on with this gas line? If she ever has that cleared up, so she can sell the house?
I think she's going to have to get in...
Well, the gas line won't be on her property, it'll be on our property, right?
Right.
So I say, as far as setbacks and all that, that won't affect her in the future selling this house?
She's probably going to have to ask for an easement at some point, because this is a history, this goes back decades.
Right.
And back at, at the time that I was interested in it and talked to her about it, my inquiries on it indicated that if it, if it's crossing, if it's encroaching at all, it's, it's just like a little bit of the corner, and it's been that way for 60, 70 years or more.
Right, but she's trying to sell it, which before, when it was her parents, I'm sure that didn't...
Yeah.
Her only concern is the gas line placement compared to clearing up her lines.
I don't think it's going to affect her line at all. I don't think it's going anywhere near it.
What I heard Mark say was that he'll be approximately 10-foot off the center line of the railroad easement, which makes him 20-foot from the edge of the easement, which is probably 15 or 16-feet from the house.
And that should be more than fine for her, then?
Yes.
Yeah, should be good.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Yep.
Any other questions? Mrs. Noel.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Sevold?
Yes.
Mr. Broney?
Yes.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. We have no resolutions for first reading. We move on now to ordinances. We have none for third reading or for second reading, but we do have one for first reading. That's ordinance number 2014-12. Mrs. Noel?
Ordinance number 2014-12. An ordinance consenting to the annexation of 84.626 acres into the city of Mount Vernon by the petition of Rodney Beckett, providing for certain city services to the annexed parcel, providing protections against incompatible users under existing township zoning, approving an annexation agreement between the city of Mount Vernon and Monroe Township, and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Vale?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, before we begin, since we didn't have the advantage of, of scheduling a committee meeting this evening, I would like to have some discussion, as we did with the hotel preliminary to moving forward in any kind of way with this, and I'd like to have 15 minutes, we may, we may stop sooner than that, but let's say 15 minutes.
Yeah, there's been a request for a 15-minute discussion on a piece of legislation that she does not plan to vote on tonight, that takes a, a rule, is there, is there a, is a motion, is there a second to have a 15-minute discussion?
A second, yeah.
Then moving to second, we go ahead with this 15-minute discussion on this ordinance, even though it will not be up for adoption tonight. Any other discussion? Mrs. Noel, please call the roll.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Sevold?
Yes.
Mr. Broney?
Yes.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Vale, we have 15 minutes to discuss ordinance 2014-12.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Well, there are a number of questions. I have read through this, as I take it, the rest of you certainly have as well, although we did not receive this until late Friday afternoon. I have questions with regard to, well, several issues, and I think that, that if the administration doesn't have the answers at this time, we'll schedule a committee meeting for next Monday, and I'd like to schedule a special council meeting for next Monday, and we'll kind of survey all of you to see who can come when, be it afternoon, or evening, or midnight, whenever it is we all could be here.
I'm gone, I'm out of state.
I'm going to be on GOBA.
Okay, so we can suspend the rules next week?
On the 16th, you'll be on GOBA?
Yeah, that's next, yeah, next, yeah.
Oh, the 18th and 19th are here, you're writing it.
Yeah, I am, sobbing, out of town, before I come here.
Mr. Assistant Law Director, if we don't have five votes to suspend the rules, then, then I couldn't, we couldn't vote on that next week, is that correct?
And that's going to be, and we're going to be running out of time. We have 20 days, and I'd have to check with Mr. McConville exactly when that 20-day run...
That's Wednesday.
Wednesday.
The 18th.
Wednesday, the 20th.
18th.
Isn't it?
18th.
The 18th.
18th.
Yeah, Wednesday, the 18th.
We can meet on Saturdays, can't we?
What about Saturday?
Well, let me just contribute this.
Yes.
We could have a meeting tomorrow night, if you wanted to have one.
Sure, we can have a meeting this week.
We don't, you know, we can have a special meeting, so, I think the point is, if we don't have suspension of the rules, then we could have our three meetings and pass it with just a majority of it, so, I mean, I, I don't, whatever anyone wants to do, but I just wanted to say that we don't have to wait till, you know, next Monday to do it, we could have it tomorrow night.
Well, let's see what the questions are, and whether or not you feel you can attain the answers by tomorrow. Can everyone come tomorrow night, if that should be the time we might schedule? You can't.
I can't, yeah, I can't either. I already have...
Okay, what about, let's see, tomorrow is Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
I have a meeting at 7:00 on Wednesday, I can come in.
Pardon me?
And I'm occupied Wednesday as well.
Can we do anything during the day? Can we do, does it have to wait till the end of the day?
No, I could, during the day is fine.
Well, then, how about everybody else? Can we do it during the day?
On what day?
Which day?
Which day?
Wednesday.
Which, which day do you all elect?
Well, tomorrow or Wednesday.
Somebody make a suggestion, tomorrow or Wednesday?
Mrs. Vale, may I ask?
I can't do it in the daytime Wednesday.
Would your intention be, then, to take this to its third and final at this next meeting?
That depends upon the discussion and the answers, and council's response.
Is, is that even a possibility this evening, if you're satisfied to take it to its third and final?
I don't think so, no.
I would rather not, and I just...
No.
I think to pass it tonight without any, I know there was public hearings in Monroe Township, but I think the people of Mount Vernon, since Mount Vernon's going to have an investment in this as well, should have a chance to suspend the rules and do it tonight, I don't think it's fair.
And collectively, we have felt that we do not want to pass anything on the first reading unless it's an absolute necessity for grant funds, or because a bill is overdue already, and it will cost us to delay it further. So, we really dislike passing anything on its first reading.
Well, what are, what are people's availability for tomorrow? Anytime of the day?
Well, thinking about, we can't do it on Wednesday at all, because thinking about tomorrow, if we want input from the public, it really doesn't give them a lot of chance, does it?
Now, I cannot do it on Wednesday in the daytime.
What about Thursday morning?
I can do it on Thursday.
Wait a minute, Wednesday 20 days up?
The 18th.
Next week.
Next week.
All right.
This week, we're, we're all right.
Thursday.
Okay, let's determine that, we can determine that even at the end of our council meeting, we can determine when it is we're going to meet again, but for now, I would like to ask the administration some questions, and the rest of you will have that opportunity as well. In the third, whereas, we talk about the city of Mount Vernon and Monroe Township have negotiated an annexation agreement concerning taxation, zoning, and the city services to be provided to the parcel when it is annexed. Well, to me, the proposed zoning, which includes R3, which is multifamily housing, is probably not something we want, and municipal planning needs to be able to determine what the zoning is, but there's nothing in this legislate, this legislation to allow that because it says concerning taxation, zoning, and the city services to be provided. So, if I may?
Can I attempt to clarify that for you?
You may.
The, the third whereas refers to that three-page document that you have back there, the annexation agreement. As you'll see, there's no zoning in there. Any annexation comes into the city and maintains its township zoning until this council and the administration goes through the standard procedure of hearings at the planning commission step, and hearings here at the council step. You won't change, no zoning will change for several months, once it's even initiated.
It will remain the R A as it is right now.
Whatever it is zoning in township, I don't know what that is.
I think it's rural agriculture, is it not? Okay. Could, Tonya, can you be sure that what Mr. Glass said is recorded in the written minutes of this meeting? Because we do want to be absolutely positive that the city will retain authority over the zoning that is applied.
Well, can we just ask Assistant City Law Director, is that not Ohio Revised Code?
Yeah, sorry about that.
I mean, whether or not Mr. Glass said it, is it, or is it...
No, is that, that's correct, is that the city always retains the right to rezone it once it comes into the city.
So that issue is resolved?
But I know that, too, but it says right here that this has been negotiated, having negotiated an agreement concerning taxation, zoning, and city services. So that's what may be concerned.
The agreement they're talking about is the one that's attached to this legislation that outlines what the provisions were that we made with the township?
All right, so long as we can, are positive, we retain that authority, then that's okay. The city services, I'm concerned about who is going to pay for those, and how is the city going to pay for, for the wastewater, laying the lines and all that, or, and the water, or who's going to pay for it?
The developers always pay for the water and wastewater.
I know they're supposed to.
Hmm?
I know they're supposed to, but, but according to your agreement, and I don't see that spelled out.
I'm sorry?
I don't see that, that fully identified in the agreement that the developer will pay.
The only participation the city's only, had in the 36 years I've been here, and development has been oversizing that we desired for larger sanitary sewer to serve a bigger area, or a larger water line to service a new water tower, those kind of things.
I just want to be sure, and I like things in writing. Okay. My understanding from what I've read is that there is no hearing required on this, but there will be on the zoning. The property tax that has heretofore remained with the townships was on a graduated scale downward, so that the city, after I think it was 13 years, gained the tax benefit from the property taxes, and I see nothing about that here. Is there a sliding scale? Do we, or is it forever that, that the property tax remains with township?
It is, Nancy, in this particular agreement, this remains with the township. We expect to derive our asset from this project from the income tax from people who are going to live and work in the area.
That's going to be a long time down the road. I just wanted to make sure.
No, that's correct, you're, you're absolutely correct on that.
But it is not a sliding scale, it's forever that the property tax remains with Monroe Township.
That's correct. So they'll continue basically to get the real estate tax that they get. Now, there, there is something on inside millage that we do get, it's a small amount, but for the most part, it will be, as growth occurs, and no one knows when that will be, the real estate tax will go to the township, we will derive our strength from the income tax.
Okay. Council, I'm going to open it to your questions.
About five minutes left.
Who has some questions?
I see some people that are out in the audience, are we, we're going to give them an opportunity...
I would hope that we could have the time to, or I can ask for an extension of the time to allow them.
When the five minutes is up, you can ask for an extension if the council agrees.
Yeah, but council, let's do council first.
If we're going to ask for, well, I thought maybe you wanted to hear from the public, it's up to you, I mean...
We do, but let's give council a chance first, go ahead, Mike.
I'm, I'm for the extension, by the way. First of all, the Beckets, it's nothing personal, I think we had this conversation...
Oh, absolutely not. We all love the Beckets.
Back when I first got on council, and I said, and like I reminded the mayor today, I've, I've said all along that I'm done going towards Gambier with annexation. We, I look at what we have today, I look at the traffic on Tushakton Avenue, 503 today, traffic was backed up clear to the, I believe, where Nancy is, Hilltop Drive, at 503, trying to get to, all right, we have a traffic problem, Tushakton Avenue, New Gambier Road, Gilcrest Road, we have to, a lot of issues now that we, we can't address, and I know they come from Apple Valley as well, but we play a part in this. I, I'm concerned with when we say police and fire protection, we have a police department right now, that if you talk to a police officer, they say we have a minimum of three officers. To me, that's not enough on the street with what we're dealing with today. Fire protection, I read that last year, a total of 4,501 runs altogether, EMS and, and fire, would come out of the 2013 report from the fire department. We keep, the street department has asked for more equipment, more people, we annex in more property, somewhere along the line, we may be getting income tax, but we're also going to have to pay for this, there's going to be more cost. Right now, the agreement with the Monroe Township on, on that road, how and who takes care of it now from 36 to where this would be?
Who, who takes care of, of Upper Gilcrest, north of Tushakton Avenue?
That'd be correct.
Township takes care of it.
The township, and they're going to continue?
Well, my feeling is, Mike, and I think we talked at the meeting, our, our trade on that was the section between Yager Road and New Gambier. My feeling is, when the annexation is complete, and we get the road fixed, and our agreement ends September of next year, I think it's their road and our road. We would then take over the north of 36, they have the section between Yager and New Gambier.
And then, all, all this, after it's developed, that'll be ours to take care of as well?
I'm, I'm sorry?
After all this is developed, the R3, the neighborhood commercially office institutional, that'd be our streets to take care of as well?
Let me comment on that, because the, the Beckets didn't come in with that, this is actually kind of my thought, when we first put together their request for annexation, I thought the people in township and council, as well as people in the city, would like to know, number one, we're not going to make industrial out of it, we're not going to make it all commercial and that sort of thing. So we asked them and their attorney, and they worked with a consulting firm, to put So we asked them and their attorney, and they worked with a consulting firm, to put together a plan that would have commercial, it would have office institutional, would have single-family residential, and multiple housing. So it was tweaked a little bit. What you see there is actually have been tweaked two or three times, but, so I, I don't think this is anything that we can hang our hat on. What we want to do is send a message that it's going to come in as township, the city has a suggestion of what it might be, but again, that all, that all goes through there. So I think we're right, it's not, there are no one, there's no one person that lives on this 80 acres, if I'm, I think I'm correct. So there's nothing there that will derive any additional income presently, and it may not for several years. On the other hand, if the economy keeps on going, somebody may come forward, and Mr. Beckett may reach an agreement, and so you might have roadways put in. We do have, and I didn't mention this, Nancy, but your question about water and wastewater availability, we will not have to build, go build a line to get it there. We have water on 36, we have wastewater there at the Health Department, New Hope School, and, and that area. So there, there will be opportunities for the developer to come in and expand that to this property, whatever it's going to be. I don't know, Mike, if that answers your question.
Well, if they put in roads, we annex in the city, we have to plow and take care of them like we do Laurelwood and all that.
Yeah, they would have to build the roads, and, and we would, we would get to count that, you know, there's always some gasoline tax and, and license fees we would get off additional road mileage, but, yeah.
That's all I have for now.
Thank you. I would like to offer, to ask for an extension of an additional 15 minutes, if we might.
Second that.
Thank you.
And moving second, any discussion on extending this for 15 more minutes? Mrs. Noah.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel?
Yes.
Mr. Baroney?
Yes.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mrs. Vale, you have 15 more minutes.
Thank you. Okay, you're finished, Mike?
Well, thank you.
Okay, Sam, you?
Yeah, to the extent that there could be future commercial establishments present on this property, do we stand, do we get any revenue from those? I understand we don't get the property tax, but are there revenues which in the normal course of doing business that we would realize?
There would be commercial activity tax, which is used the old personal property, so there's not as much as there used to be, but anybody that works there would pay it.
We would get that income tax.
So that would be income tax, the business would have to file, so there would be opportunities for us to gain revenue from any business that would locate there. I mean, I don't know if that answers.
Aside from, I'm, I'm trying to pinpoint the benefits here. I mean, I, I certainly see a benefit in that we as a city would control the zoning fate of this property through our processes, and that, to me, is a huge benefit. But I guess, I share Mike's concern that if we're going to take on some new infrastructure liability, you know, we don't want that to be a detriment to the city. And I guess I'm just, if those, if those, if that infrastructure does, does come to pass, I'm assuming it will come to pass because there are either new homes or new businesses, and I just want to make sure that the revenue generated from those enterprises helps to pay for it.
Yeah, and they, you know, even though they wouldn't pay a 40% surcharge in water, wastewater, they would still have to pay their tap fees, their service fees, and their user fees for that.
Right.
So we would still, our utility would, and we're in a business to sell water and treat wastewater, so that's, that's what we do. This would, again, expand that service. And we have the capacity to do it, too.
Okay.
Then, then what about the timing that is required, that we have to set forth insofar as utilities? We don't need to be concerned about that, then?
Uh, see, I'm not quite sure.
In the agreement, according to what I read?
It says it's available, I think.
In the state code, we, okay, so long as we say it's available, we're all right.
Yeah, and it is. It isn't something that, you know, that we're going to have to extend, extend out to get there. It's, it's really a developer, again, you'd have to get under the highway and that sort of thing, but water is, is there to serve.
Okay. Okay, counsel, who else has?
The only thing I, I want to make sure that we are kind of aware of, and I'm, I'm sure all the new members are, I might have to be reminded of this. You know, office institutional and neighborhood commercial encompasses an awful lot of stuff. So you could have a, you could have a neighborhood commercial, if, if, my concern would be, neighborhood commercial, for, for instance, if it doesn't, if it passes from current owner to someone else as neighborhood commercial, what all can you put in there?
But that doesn't necessarily, we're not approving, we're not accepting that.
I'm just saying that if it would be neighborhood commercial, or office institutional, I think it would be who of us to make sure that we knew for sure what was in those. I'm not even sure, and I feel kind of dumb saying this, but I'm not sure what R3 is.
That's multifamily.
Multifamily, so we've been down that road several times before. I just want to make sure that we all understand where this could morph into, or what it could morph into.
I would not be in favor of R3 at all.
No, I would not either.
One of the things that, as I said, this was, this was just an opportunity for us to see what could be there, but in, in the zoning code itself, it outlines, and John, I've said this in planning commission, there's, people will come in and say, well, I, I want to put a, a record store, or a rental for movies and that sort of thing in that, but it's neighborhood commercial. So if he sells it, and this is the point you're making, if he runs his business for five years and it doesn't go well, he wants to sell the property.
Correct.
And, and that's when you have to, and I think anyone like yourself, or neighbors, or anyone else, would have to look down, what is acceptable use in neighborhood commercial? And it, it does help to know that, because it may not always be a movie rental place.
Right.
That's right.
Could I, could I ask one more question before? Could, for the, for everyone's benefit, and not just mine, could we talk a little bit about the, the, the logic or the philosophy of allowing Monroe Township to retain access to the real estate, to the property taxes? As I realize at this point, they're, they're minimal, it's, it's open land, but once it's developed, those taxes will be significant. Why is it that in this arrangement, we would cede those in perpetuity?
The annexation, now going back to 2001, makes annexation almost impossible without the approval of the township trustees. I don't believe the township trustees are interested in annexing this property without this.
Allowing us to annex, I mean.
Well, annexed, they're not willing to support the annexation. I mean, they, we can't annex it unless, it starts with them, really, and the owner, but, so this was a proposal that they were receptive to doing. They were not, I mean, there's four, I think they were four methods of annexation. So it looked to us like this was an area where we would have growth, close enough for housing, close enough for commercialization, and we derive a large part of our, if you look at the amount of money the city gets from real estate taxes, first, the amount of money we get from income taxes, it's not comparable. So basically, that's where we were going with this.
If I may, in the Ohio Revised Code, it does say, the exception to this rule with regard to property taxes is if the municipality and township have entered into an annexation agreement, or a cooperative economic development agreement that would allow such exclusion or removal from the township. So there is a means by which we could even, even maybe establish a sliding scale. I can understand why, if they have passed levies, they certainly need the support of those tax dollars. But on the other hand, when people come into the city, and they then receive city services, and of course, they vote in the city, they vote in the township as well, but why, when someone is receiving city services, would they vote to pay taxes for a new levy for those same services? So logic says to me that having a graduated sliding scale downward would, you know, if it's 13 years, that allows adequate time for consideration of how they want to handle the, the levies from there on. The levies that currently are on the books would be paid for.
Well, usually, they, you know, they're, they, they pay a fire levy out there.
Sure they do.
And as long as that's in the township, those people would continue to pay a fire levy and a road levy, whatever they're paying out, they would continue to do that.
But we'd have to service it?
We have to service them, yes.
Even though they're, yeah.
Yeah, it would be, they'll be under the Mount Vernon Fire Department.
Sure, we, we would derive, again, going back, the, the revenue we're going to achieve from this would be, you know, we have our water, wastewater revenue, we have license, some license fees and that sort of thing, but our, our job development here is, is going to be the real key income we have. I, I can't, you know, I mean, that's the, at least that's the motivation I have, and Nancy, the, the township wasn't interested in after 12 years not getting any money back from this property, because it's probably take that long for it to develop. So again, this only can occur if the township and the city agree to this, this agreement that you all have in front of you.
Were they approached from that standpoint?
Absolutely, we, we approached every phase of the annexation process. I mean, I, I mean, I.
Forever is a long time.
Well, there is this provision in there, when, once people begin to reside in the area, there is a section in there, I believe, that says that if the people in the area want to become just part of the city, they can, and I don't know how many, what part of the voting base has to be there, but there are some provisions.
Now, I didn't read that, and I read it all, of what I was given.
It's in there. You're reading about expedited type 2, so it's not an expedited type 2 annexation.
Yeah. On a, and we've had this conversation before, and the, some of the questions and comments I am getting is about traffic. I don't know if anybody sitting here has, gets as many calls as I do about the amount of traffic on New Gambier Road, and if we're ever going to do anything about it, from, from Gilcrest to Eastern Star. In my opinion, these same people that we're going to get income tax from are going to add to that burden. The continual, you know, and I know Apple Valley adds to that, and everybody, there's other issues, Monroe Township, whoever. Has there been consideration, what we're going to do with the increase in traffic going across south?
Mike, we have on the drawing board that connector to tie into 229, it's not been popular, but I think down the road, some, somebody want to seize that and, and connect 229 and 36 would help relieve that traffic. What's outside the city, whether they're, they'd ever make it three-lane to Apple Valley, I don't know. I think we did a pretty good job on widening Kishakton Road. You can talk about the eastbound traffic, I'm sure that's what you were talking about earlier in your earlier testimony?
Yes.
Eastbound traffic, a couple of times a day is bad.
I know, we're trying to address that as well.
And so that's something we continue to work on. That was a, as you know, it was a state design, a state designed the safety part of that. Safety's not totally out of the question now, we still have some accidents, but fewer than we had before, so we accomplished that. But, but traffic is going to be an issue, whether this develops or not. We, we have to deal with it, and, Mike, the eastern part of the county, Apple Valley primarily, is going to continue to develop. I think people will come to Mount Vernon, we're the county seat, we invite them here to do business.
We have some more counsel questions, and then I do want to give the public a chance, so we're running low on time, we may need to have another extension. John, you have some questions?
Mrs. Vale, thank you. And I know you've answered this already, we, we asked before the meeting, I'm just going to ask it again, that way everybody's clear and is clarified. The, the, the colored markers on this map are just an example of the zone.
That's correct.
It's not zoned right now.
That's correct.
The zoning has to go through us, so even being annexed, it's just, it's just empty property. It still retains the zoning it's got now until we change it.
That's right.
So it's up to us anyways.
And if counsel.
If we don't like R3, then it's not going to become R3.
That's correct.
Okay. And I'm just, for myself and anybody listening, but it, I know it's redundant.
This ordinance is just simply part of the annexation process.
So this could happen like what we did with the doctors' property at Yauger and Gilcrest, where we got forced to annex it, and we couldn't come to an agreement on the zoning.
That did happen there.
And it's sitting there.
And then one more question. And, and I know that in the agreement, there has to be a buffer zone, a, a green space between certain property, and I see that in P1 here, and I know it's just an example, but if there's a buffer put in there, who takes care of that? Is that our responsibility, township's responsibility, or the landowner's responsibility?
It'll probably depend on what the buffer was. If it was part of, say, a residential development, you had them build a hedge or a wall or something like that, that would be their responsibility to maintain. If they gave the property to the city as a part, it would be our responsibility to maintain it. It depends what you do.
Yeah, along that line, John, I think everybody read in the agreement, there's, because that's a big thing in the annexation, is this buffer zone. If the city were to do something next door to the township that was incompatible, not compatible, then it would be necessary by law that there'd have to be a buffer zone in there, and it would have to be maintained by the, the property owner that built it there. And that is talked about in there, because it's a sensitive issue when you have a part of it in the city. This one's still in the township, but it will be subject to city zoning. So sensitivity to what's in the township is high here.
Right. Thank you.
I did read that a buffer zone, and I'm looking for it right now, a buffer zone can be sidewalks or streets. A buffer, a buffer is defined to be open space, landscaping, fences, walls, other structures, but if in fact, the developer does not adhere to that, then it's not up to the city to see that it's enforced, but rather, the property owners who don't like it are going to have to go through a civil procedure and take it to the courts. That's in Section D, let's see, is that page, was it on page 40?
Nancy, I think the intent from the city was that, you know, when it comes to planning commission, and this particular zoning is approved, we would require the developer to put in the buffer zone, we would require that as part of their approval. If they did not do it, we would probably do it and put it on their taxes.
Then you will uphold getting that taken care of.
That was the full intent, sure.
All right. Okay, so long as we have everything in writing, I don't have a concern with it.
Mrs. Vale, you, 15 minutes are up, so you need to decide if we're going to do this next week, because we're not going to answer all the questions tonight, or if you want to have, ask for another extension.
I'd like to have another short extension, because I want to give the public an opportunity to speak.
Yeah, we have people that are here.
Exactly. So if we may, let's make it another 15 minutes, and then we can conclude sooner than that, if in fact we want to.
Second. Moving second, we extend for another 15 minutes, any discussion? Mrs. Noah?
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel?
Yes.
Mr. Baroney?
Yes.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mrs. Vale, you have 15 minutes.
Okay.
Nancy, I have one question.
All right.
Okay, this land then will be in the township and in the city. What if the, they sells it, and it's a subdivision, and they want to be just in the city? They won't be able to do that, will they?
There is a section, Janice, that sometime down the road, and I'm not sure how many years that is, that, that the people that live in the area could vote to just come into the city.
Okay, so we're not stopping that, right? Okay, good.
But along that line, residents who, who happen to be in that area can run for office in the city, or they can run for office in the township, they can hold offices in either place, they also will be voting, both in the township and in the city. Now, I questioned that because of, for instance, presidential's voting, but I have been assured by the election board that in fact, there are special ballots for these folks, so they will be voting, not twice.
And that now exists with the condos across the street there.
Correct. Now, you who are, who have come tonight, we appreciate your presence, and we want to give you an opportunity to speak. Will you please come forward if there's anything you want to say or question?
Anybody who wants to speak, come up to the podium, say your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Neil McAvoy, 12092 Upper Gilcrest Road. That's a pretty simple little question. What the mayor said about the, you can, people, residents could vote, if you get enough of them, they could vote to strictly be in the city only. Okay, so that means township won't get tax money if they did that?
That's a good question.
They, road tax, fire levies and that sort of thing, and real estate tax. Is that your question, whether or not, if they vote to come into the city, does all that come to the city then?
Everything goes to the city. Income, or property taxes go to the city then?
Well, that's a good question, and I, I don't know, Rob, I, I know you're new on this thing, but once the city has signed and approved this agreement, I, I don't know whether the fact that the people then vote to come into the city full-time, whether that negates that. I, I guess I don't know the answer to that.
Kind of a no some question.
That's too technical a question.
Kind of important one.
Is that, is that I know that it is in the legislation, in the Revised Code, that allows that. How that interacts with the, with this agreement that we've signed, I don't know that we can actually vote to bind the people who would eventually move into there. I mean, it's something that Mr. McConville and I can take a look at and get back to counsel with.
Perhaps that's one of the questions then that needs to be resolved before we.
Yeah, it sounds like a pretty important one to make.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience like to come up and speak? Come on up. Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
I am Deborah McAvoy at 12092 Upper Gilcrest Road. I have various reasons for questioning this whole annexation. One is, it is called expedited annexation number two, and it is definitely expedited. I mean, there has been no consideration for the property owners who are adjoining to this property to be notified of even this meeting tonight. There was no notification, public notification, of this meeting tonight. Why? I don't know, I think I have my answers, but no, it needs to be made public. This is a big, big thing, okay? And then, number two, if the city is going to be supporting this annexation with their fire and their EMS and everything like that, like Mrs. Vale said, there is going to be no, I hate to say there's going to be no support from, from Monroe Township, but they're going to say, if it's already be, you know, if, if this is being, the people in that annexation are going to say, well, we're allowed to vote on the Monroe Township side and the city side, but if we're already being taken care of by the city, why do we want to vote for additional taxes from the township to support fire and EMS service that is already being provided by the city? So we are going to be losing a lot of votes in that sense, and Monroe Township might actually even lose all of. actually even lose all of its support, not all of its support, but a majority of its support for its fire and its EMS. Again, what type of development is going to be going on in there? You folks don't even know what type of development is going to be going on in there, but yet you're willing to annex it in and, and say, "Okay, fine, let's go for it." It might be all commercial.
Well, wait, Debbie, first of all, it sounds like you're getting a little emotional here, but first-
I am getting emotional. This is very emotional to me, because this, this, this property surrounds my property and my lifestyle, sorry.
Please.
The only thing I wanted to say is, the reason we don't know, because we don't know whether the Beckets are going to develop it themselves, or whether they're going to sell that, we have no idea what person may come in and what it wants to put there, but it has to go through planning commission, it has to go through this body, and, and those are all public meetings, and if you, I know you've been part of this before, counsel has always been sensitive to what goes on in the township, so, I mean, you may, it sounds like you're making accusations, and I think you're wrong there. We're actually following the rules here, and we're actually following the leadership of the township.
This meeting was not made public, that I'm aware of.
Yes, it was.
Where was it?
In a legal ad.
In a legal ad?
In the newspaper.
Okay, I did not see that, and I apologize for that. But we don't, as, you know, again, it seems like it's just, everyone is so eager to annex with no consideration for the loss of farmland. And I know that's been a very major part of my, my soul and everything, is the loss of farmland, because it will never, ever, ever be again, a source of food and providing food for, for, you know, us. So, what do we do? Yeah, it's only 88 acres here, 88 acres there, 88 acres somewhere else, but that is all the more that we have to rely upon foreign countries and foreign food to feed our, to feed, to feed us.
Okay, thank you. Your three minutes are up, so, we'll, we'll have another committee meeting next week, so-
Okay, the mayor took up part of my time.
Well, yeah, but we also give you another 30 seconds.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak before, speak before council tonight? As she said, we will have another committee meeting, either this week or next week, it has to be before the, the time limit runs out, so.
That's right.
Are we still within our 15 minutes?
We have seven minutes and 36 seconds.
Okay. I would like to ask anybody in the room, including administration, what is, in their minds, the compelling reason for us to do this? I know at one point, when I was on the, on the Knox County Park District, you know, I, I was very ardent about our acquiring Wolf Run, and because, in my mind, it made some sense to kind of draw a line in the sand at Upper Gilcrest Road in terms of commercial development. I don't necessarily apply the same, the same attitude toward residential, because we will always have, we hope we will have residential needs, but in terms of commercial, I mean, one of the big reasons that I was working toward our getting the Wolf Run project completed is because I thought, "Well, there's one area that's not going to be developed." I, I guess, you know, what is the compelling reason in anyone's mind for us, for this land to be developed?
Let me give you one, Sam. If city does not approve this, Mr. Beckett could develop that ground in the township. Granted, we would make 40% on our water wastewater. We get none of the income tax from it, we have no control over the zoning, we have nothing, they'll just be there in the township. Same as we have on Harcourt Road, those, those things are there. This is an effort for at least the city to have some say on, on what develops in a municipal area here, so.
But that would be contingent, depending upon the township approving certain zoning changes, right?
Township would be responsible for putting the type zoning in that would allow them to do residential, or commercial, or office institutional, that's true.
And I'm just curious, have, have, they been, has the township, had the township been approached prior to this time?
That, that never came up in any of the discussions that I sat in.
So, do we have any feeling at all for the township trustees, or what, if this didn't go through in the city, what they might do?
I don't know that, Mike, I guess I'd have to say, that is part of the, the discussion we had, it was, it never took that direction. It never said, if, we never said to them, "Well, if the city denies this, will you then consider development, zoning? Would the pressure from some development cause you to move in that direction?" I have to say, that never came up.
Who provided the initiative for this, actually?
That's what I was wondering.
Landowner.
Landowner, okay.
Normally, that's the way that happens.
Typical, yeah, yeah, okay.
Who provided it? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Landowner.
Okay, 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 okay.
So, what is Beckett planning on doing with this?
Yeah, Rod Beckett is here.
Maybe Mr. Demery or Dr. Beckett would like to come and, and have a few words.
Hi, my name is Dirk Demery. There's a few things I can tell you. First of all, Mr., Dr. Beckett and Mrs. Beckett are meeting with their engineers on Wednesday to go over some preliminary ideas and determine what might even be a possibility on this size of a piece of land. I know that Dr. Beckett plans on doing the development himself, and I also know that at this point in time, he is not interested in R3 zoning for this property.
Okay.
Can you tell us what he is in after?
Glad to hear that.
We don't know yet. We have to find out what we can do with it, to know what the possibilities are before we can choose what we want to do, and then we have to work with the city, and of course, with the planning commission, in order to make sure that those plans are in keeping with, with what's allowable and what fits in with the city's plan.
And so, your motivation for coming to the city and requesting this annexation is for these city services that are, are better city services than the, are the better services than the township can provide?
Well, I think there's a lot of motivations here. Obviously, anytime somebody thinks about developing their land, they're willing to risk some of their assets in an effort to make more assets. And so, in this instance, not only are they doing that, but they're wanting to be connected to the city for the reason that you just mentioned, which is that we believe the city's services are superior, and that it will make this not only more pleasant for the people who live and work there, but it will make it more, a more valuable development for them. Also, we wanted to avoid making Coshockton Road the hodgepodge that Harcourt has been or is, depending upon your opinion. And so, we wanted to fit in with the plan that the mayor and the safety service director have with their vision for what this extension of Coshockton Road, you know, might become. Now, we believe that there are potentially commercial people that are interested, but commercial people won't step in and start making offers to you until they have some, some concept of what the grounds, how large the area is that's available, and what the development potentially is going to look like. Is it going to be all commercial? Is it going to be partially residential? And so, that's where the engineers come in. They can tell Dr. and Mrs. Beckett what the possibilities are, and they can choose an initial plan of attack, and then review it with the mayor and the safety service director, get their guidance, and then eventually, when we all think we have something that would be a plus for the city of Mount Vernon, then of course, you all will have an opportunity to go over zoning for the area and determine if you agree with what's been decided.
And why didn't you want to completely annex and leave the township? Why are you wanting to stay and do both?
We're following the procedure that's set out by the Revised Code. We did not make a choice not to be fully part of the city. This is the way the expedited two procedure is developed, and this was the procedure. I believe that it was determined by the city and the township together, that this was the procedure that they favored us to follow, which is why we did it.
To me, it's consoling that the Beckets will be handling the development themselves. I think that's, that is certainly a plus to us, and that they are interested and willing to work closely with the city in the best interests of, of that portion of the city, and the city, and their economics as well.
Well, some of you may already know, this land that we're talking about was farmland that belonged to Dr. Beckett's father, and so, he does not want to, well, he-